You good, Ken?
Good.
Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, November 8th, 2021, meeting to order. Mr. Tiller, will you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Yes, sir. What is the prayer? Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the blessings that you give us each and every day. Be with us now as we can duck this meeting and see that we do it in an amount that is most pleasing to you. For these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, and to the Republic where we sustain this one nation under God and in this with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Good evening, welcome everyone, welcome everybody at home. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We'll get started. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any changes or comments? None, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and that it be made part of the record.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will we call the roll, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next, we have a special presentation. It's our, one of the highlights for me since I've been on the board. It's the 15th Annual New Kent University Graduation. For you all that don't know, it's a 10-week, 12-week? 10-week course that residents of the county can sign up and take, and it's been very successful. They go around to the different departments, fire, schools, planning, and every department and learn it. Each, learn what each of our departments do. So it's been very successful over the years. I want to thank Krista Ute, Wanda Watkins, Shannon McLaughlin, and Justin Stoddard for heading, taking, taking lead on this and doing a great job. So... Do other, any other board members have any comments they want to make? Yep, we would like to thank our sponsors, Davenport was a main sponsor.
So I would tell you, as a graduate, I want to apologize for not meeting with you this evening. Days sometimes get crazy and mine got crazy at the end. And I don't know if I should apologize or tell you how lucky you are that I hadn't, I didn't had the opportunity to attend most of your classes because normally I just go in and bombard my way and they, they lose all, all focus on what's going on. But thank you so much for your time because it did take time. But I knew you guys had a bunch of fun and you learned a lot. And so it's so appreciated that you took the time to learn more about this great county that you live in. Thank you and proud of you.
Ms. Page, I know you missed the reception, but there's one graduate that made a pretty good comment. If you wouldn't mind standing up, making that comment again at the reception about what she, what she learned during the... Come up to the mic, if you don't mind. I told her this needed to be public.
Thank you very much. My name is Karen Tomlin and I'm graduating tonight. I felt that this was such a good program and this, and I felt that every department that we met with were such stewards of taxpayer dollars. And they were energetic and enthusiastic, loved the county and loved their job. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other graduate have any comments they'd like to make? Well, I do appreciate those comments. We had a board retreat the last week and I told our staff that I feel like we have a really good staff. We realize that we work for the citizens in New Kent County. I think I've been here for 14 years now and I feel like the staff that we have in place now is par than none now. And they know they work for the citizens of this county as just as much as we do. We all work for you. So we, we appreciate, appreciate you understanding that. All right, now I'm going to turn it over to Krista to hand out the diploma. Do you want us to come up?
When I call your name, you can come on up and get your diploma. Eve Alfonso. Shannon Belvin. William Dismore. Dolores Hile. Christine Mason. Holly Maggie. Yvonne Robinson. Judith Swartz. Karen Tomlin. And we had three graduates tonight that couldn't join us for the board meeting. They are Nancy Nolan, Ruth Pietrowski, and Andrew Shine.
Thank you, Krista. So by the power vested in me, as chairman of the Board of Supervisors of New Kent County, I declare you graduates of New Kent University. Thank you. Next is Citizens Comment Period. Anyone sign up? Just to remind you, when you come up to the microphone, you have, please state your name and address for the record and you will be given three minutes to speak. We have one person sign up, Mr. Patrick Horstley.
How are y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Members of the board, my name is Patrick Horstley. I reside in Venetara at 7247 Blanc Street. I'm here this evening to express my support for the conversion of the certain parcel that y'all will be voting on later on tonight. It's my understanding that these homes will be $600,000 to $800,000 semi-custom homes and have the same design standards as the estates with the caveat of some form of repetition. As a home builder, developer, and real estate agent, I can tell you greater than 90% cannot visualize building something completely custom and need some sort of visualization and standard pricing packages to understand what they are receiving. Whether the reserve section ends up remaining one acre or gets approved to have half-acre lots, it's my understanding the reserve will have to have some form of repetition and will be changed either way to adjust to the current market conditions. Not approving the proposal will not only keep development continuing at a slower pace, but at build-out, we will have close to 70 fewer homes in the development to help with the maintenance of the amenities and roads. We need to diversify the product offering within Venetara to help spur the development growth. With this proposal to the county, there will not be any changes to the current estate section as well as the two developed estate parcels. The petition that was handed out last month to the board with over 30-plus signatures in favor of this proposal were all landowners within the estate and villa section that have thoroughly researched the proposal and have come to their own conclusion of even, even though that they know the reserve will have repetition. To insinuate anything else is just wrong. And I hope the emails you received over the last week from over 15 of the household proves that point. In conclusion, I feel New Kent Farms LLC is trying to protect and develop all values while strategically adding the diversity of the product to the property to further spur development growth. I respectfully ask that you approve the proposal that over 30 of my neighbors support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Horstley. Next, the residency administrators report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marsha Nguyen with VDOT. This past month, we received 37 work orders and completed 40, had four call-outs. October is a month that we do snow removal, pre-trips and that sort of thing. Most of the month, at least two weeks worth was with working on equipment, putting everything together, making sure our stocks were full for this coming winter. So that's all completed. We're ready to go for snow removal if we have any snow this year. I did have a report today that I received from DTN. It's one of the weather stations that we utilize. And they're saying a warmer-than-normal winter with less precipitation. Keep my fingers crossed on that, so. Secondary mowing, we've done about 80% so far, still working on that. Started on the primary mowing, which completed 106 and 155 and started on Route 60 today. Couple of other items that I want to bring to your attention, 249 pavement marking. I'm sure y'all all wondering about that. I am too. They, they, they did the section between Dispatch and 60. Started on the section between Dispatch and 612 and where the roundabout is. I expect them to have that completed this week. Okay, scratch that off the list. Long overdue, in my opinion. I don't know what the problem was with the pavement marking crews. Been after the construction manager ever since we spoke last month. And it's a problem across the Richmond District with the pavement marking. Speed study on Pine Fork was completed. They reduced the speed limit to 45. Signs have been installed, so. Couple of other items that I want to let y'all know about. The, the ditching that we got planned with the pallet plant. We will start on that next week. That should be completed next week. Also working on a couple of other items at Plum Point. We're going to do some ditching in there, some ditching that we can do. Probably go first do all the sign maintenance in there. There are old signs throughout the whole subdivision. We'll upgrade those signs. And other than that, I really don't have anything else, other than, you know, the corridor study on 60 and 33 and 30. That's still ongoing. Don't have any more information about that. Hopefully we'll have some information pretty soon about those two corridor studies. So other than that, I don't have anything else, not unless y'all have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Steers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nguyen, I had a town hall meeting last Thursday at Frickshire. One of the biggest concerns of the residents in that area is the speed on Kentland Trail. And I know you've done a speed study in the past with there over 100 new homes being built in there this year and everything. I'm asking if you could come back and possibly do another speed study and try to get the speed limit below 45. I mean, there's several curves as you're coming in on Kentland Trail.
Right.
That have crosswalks and people start across it and they almost get hit. The cars are going so fast. So I would ask that if you could possibly put in for another speed study.
We can do that. We can do that.
Thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Ms. Tiller?
Just one thing, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but I am. The intersection Marketplace Drive and 60, I know you said before you couldn't mark the turn lanes, stop bars. Could you at least put two yellow lines in the middle? So when people are coming out of food line, they'll know where they're...
To go, to go across 60 into the eastbound lane?
Yes.
I will look into that.
Because I think that might help people know where they're supposed to go.
Right.
Or where they're not supposed to go, maybe that's...
I'm sure everybody is jockeying for position and blocking the crossovers with their doing, so.
Yeah, I mean, every once in a while, if you're sitting there, people will wait for you to pull out if you're sitting in the middle there to go east.
Okay.
They'll, they'll wave you on, but it's kind of hard to see sometimes if it's two or three cars and you can't tell what's in those two lanes that are not turning.
Okay, understood.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockwood? Put your mic on.
Thank you. The, the Dam Bridge at God's Pond on Holly Forks Road.
600. Route 600.
600.
That's Route 600.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Any word on getting that? I mean, that steel plate has been there for a couple of years. I mean, things can't be getting better. And I mean, we've, we've talked about it several times. Have you heard?
Yeah, I talked to Bridge. We had a meeting with Bridge week before last. They finalized their plans for that bridge and they plan on coming and doing the work in the spring.
In the spring.
So March timeframe, somewhere in there. I can tie it down better later on. I can let you know later on.
Please do.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it? Ms. Page?
Thank you for taking four things off of my list. Now, Cooksville Road, everybody's excited because one portion is done. So when is the other end going to be done? From 249 Payette, Soddy Creek?
I'll have to ask Joe when he's got a plan. I do know that, that Cooksville is on this coming year's schedule for modified double seal from...
One end to the other?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, let me put this down, okay. And Stage Road between Ropus Church and Polkstown Road. That road was a road that was under rural rustic.
Right.
And this heard several versions of that road. And so it becomes the version that I heard at the Board of Supervisors meeting was that a contractor went and did it, which is not the case.
I know.
And so my concern becomes, we poured money into that road. And so the way that the ditches were, were dragged and, and the way that the road was done with the limited amount of base on the road, it looks as if just went across it and just went across it. It, it doesn't look like New Kent ever got its money's worth out of that road after the first month. And so the road has potholes, is, it's not level. I know what rural rustic is, but... And it's promise after promise, we're going to take care of that road.
I do know that once the grass is cut, Joe has got a plan to go in there and do ditching first and then work on some of the pavement issues in there. I'll have to get with him to get with you on his plan. Ms. Page?
Okay, we can ride it if you want to. Airport Road. Airport Road had a sign at the roundabout, a speed limit sign. And I guess through all the construction, maybe it came down. But when you turn, when you do the roundabout coming off of 249, there's no longer a speed limit sign. And I really want to think it was 35, but it probably was 45. But anyway, that sign is not there. Also, it would be my ask if we could put a sign, a speed limit sign after they turn out of Food Line and also when they're turning out of Quinton Estates.
Go ahead.
And on that road, about a quarter of a mile down, it is a dead limb that's hanging.
East of the roundabout or west?
East.
Okay.
So I thank you. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you. When, when was the last time? I know there was a traffic study done on 249 up there. There Rick saw through that nude roundabout where the nude food line is. Has that been, has that been a couple of years ago?
I'll have to look. I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
I mean, now with that nude food line, I mean, it's, I'm getting some complaints. I mean, common sense would, I mean, when we were doing, going through this whole process, common sense would tell you, I think it should be 45 miles per hour at, at, probably west of Brad's, even maybe on through where the elementary school is. I mean, that's 55 miles an hour with all that traffic going in the food line and new food line and all that development coming up, 612. I would just ask you to look into that now since that food line has been put in place.
I will, I will. But you said it used to be 35, Ms. Page, right before the roundabout?
Was it 35?
Pardon?
On Airport?
Not sure. I'd have, I'd have to look at every...
Yeah, it's 35 on Airport then.
I'd have to look in their route file to, to see what it was supposed to be.
Because it's...
It's supposed to be 35.
Well, I'll look in their route file first. I know what you want it to be.
All I know is that sign is missing. And it's like I said, I guess it was doing construction or whatever, but they don't have signs on that road. So, you know, when they scoot about that roundabout, they just like, we home now.
But you know, I do agree with the new food line. Another study is warranted.
I mean, when you're coming west, when you're coming eastbound, 249, somebody's coming out of the food line westbound. I mean, it's a curve right there, so I mean...
Yeah, yeah. Plus, plus they got to finish the pavement marking in that area too.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
That's, that's all. I do have the, the traffic study on, for the truck park, parking restriction. What is, what is...
Really?
Yeah, what is that about?
It's still ongoing. It's, it's about people parking, tractor trailers parking, from what I understand. Huh?
What is it? Just parking outside 106 is what, what that is or?
It's 106 and Airport of Virginia Natural Gas. That's the one I got.
Oh, okay. On Jimmy's World Lane. Okay, not on 106. Okay. That's all I have.
All right, y'all have a good one.
All right, thank you. Next item is the Richmond Region Tourism Annual Presentation. Mr. Berry, how are you?
Very good, Mr. Chairman. Great to be back here, members of the board. I'm Jack Berry with Richmond Region Tourism. I'm joined by Catherine O'Donnell and J.C. Pomer for our annual greeting, which is a lot brighter than it was a year ago. Things have gotten much, much improved. But through the pandemic, it's really learned that tourism is economic development. We've never been more devastated because 20 months ago, when the New York Times put out the top 52 destinations in the world to visit, New York Times had stated that Richmond is number 39. Paris was 31. So we were seven cities off of Paris of being cool cities. But what happened was...
What was that, what was that paper again?
New York Times.
Okay.
Which is a big feeder market for our destination, actually. But then, of course, then 20 months ago, the court, the, the virus hit. And then just, this just shows you, it's a calendar year of the occupancies. And April was the basement for the decline of occupancies. It was down 55%. We would, the occupancy was 30.9. But to note, it gradually was coming back in calendar year 2020. And this is to show you that in 2019 was our record year, calendar year, and it was 27.7 million visitors. And we were hit by such a huge reduction in the tourists. But take a look at April on the occupancy in 2019, which was a record year. In 2021, it was coming back. But then in June, it was closing the gap on the occupancy and RevPAR is revenue per available, per available room, taking the occupancy and the average daily rate. It's a dollar value of what the hotel makes per room. And so where are we now? So right now, going into the fourth quarter of the calendar year, we are coming back strong. And we're just opening up and Ms. Page had mentioned she volunteered for a convention that's moving in today for thousands of people this week. We have thousands of people next week for a mission convention. And so things are looking up tremendously. And this is what the, the, kind of the sentiment about travel, and this, we take the temperature all the time. And coming into the holidays for the holiday season in December, as well as Thanksgiving, is that it's looking very, very positive with the Delta variant declining. People are really getting ready to travel and hit family and friends. But now this is what's really remarkable. In 2019, it was a record year in occupancy. More people were coming, but that's nationwide. Everybody had a fabulous year, but we're one of the destinations that has come back fastest. Look at the occupancy for July of 2021. Forget 2020 because 2020 numbers are just the COVID year. But compared to the record year in occupancy, July, August, and September outpaced 2019. There are more people coming and what they're coming for are the sports tourism, the family and friends, and the leisure traveler. And what we find is that in 2021, the leisure traveler has returned. In 2022, we feel that meetings and conventions will be coming back strong and business travel will be coming back in 2023. And I'm going to show you a short video of greeting those visitors for coming.
Good evening, everyone. Great to see you all. That's a video that we made while the pandemic was going on to keep the Richmond region top of mind for travelers because while people weren't traveling, as we saw from those numbers, they were dreaming about travel. So it's important for us to help people remember the Richmond region and New Kent County are wonderful places to visit now that travel is back. We continue to get great accolades. You can see a sampling here of some of the media coverage that has told the story about Conde Nast, Departures Magazine, Travel and Leisure, some very reputable travel publications talking about visiting the Richmond region and the things that there are to see and do here in our region. So again, talking about our travelers, when we're looking at the American Traveler, they're more and more vaccinated and it's actually upwards of 90% now that are planning to travel the next six months. So there's actually a thing called revenge travel, which is there are so many people who are angry that they didn't get to travel in 2020, they've made plans to travel even more in 21 and 22 and spend even more money. So it's boding really well for all of us, especially in New Kent has so many wonderful offerings for our leisure visitors. The activity is in fall, also very perfect for New Kent, visiting friends and family, taking a road trip, parks, hikes, farmers markets, fall foliage, all those wonderful things that you all offer are really poised for what people want to do when they're traveling for leisure. So when we look at where we're headed, the travel of the future, again, is spending more money. So this is great. Unlike other recessions in 9/11, we don't have to discount our way back into travel. People are willing to spend more, again, taking those revenge trips, those trips of a lifetime, which is really beneficial to our businesses, that they don't have to offer specials to entice them. They're also looking for relaxation and transformational experiences and to support local businesses, which we know make up a lot of what New Kent has to offer. And then, of course, entertainment as well that is offered in places like Colonial Downs. And Jack mentioned our pillars of travel already. We do really well in the Richmond region in general because we have these four different pillars of travel and we don't have all of our eggs in one basket. And so while business travel might be the last place to come back, we still have these other three pillars that are supporting the growth and the rebound in tourism. We are, as a team, out on the road, looking to recruit meetings and conventions and events to back to the Richmond region. And we launched a new program called Meaningful Meetings that's designed to align our meeting and event recruitment with economic development. So we're going after meetings in our, in our key economic development sectors. Of course, during the pandemic, the airport launched some new air service. We now have Breeze Airways, which is a new discount carrier that was started by the folks who started JetBlue. And JetBlue also launched new flights, including flights to the West Coast. So we're even more accessible for more people to come in and visit our region. And we're advertising and promoting our region as a getaway to the people who live in those markets. And when we look at our marketing, there's a lot of data here, but really the most important piece is the return on the investment. So we have some pretty sophisticated, and Ms. Page hears about this at our board meetings, but sophisticated software that can really track for people who have been exposed to our advertising or to our website when they come here and their hotel stays. And so we know that people who have interacted in our, with our website generates a 41 to one return on investment and 17 to one for paid advertising. So investing in tourism works, it pays off, and it brings more people to our community to spend more dollars. Of course, New Kent has, is a longstanding participant in Richmond region tourism. You have a robust presence on our website, which is visitrichmanva.com. It sees around a million visitors a year. And since you all invest in us, all of your tourism-related businesses are allowed to be on our website for free. They can access these listings, go in, put in pictures, coupons, menus, deals to promote themselves. It's free advertising for any business on behalf of your constituents. We also have a robust social media presence. Again, so we're inspiring travel. We have advertising, we have our websites, we're on social media, talking about all the things that there are to see and do in the Richmond region, featuring New Kent Winery here. But we love to promote the things that are specific to New Kent to people who are considering or planning trips to the Richmond region. We also have a blog, the rva blog.com, same idea where we can do roundups of great places to visit around the region. We just did a really popular post on 10 Instagram-worthy fall photo locations and we have the wineries featured here as well. And one thing I wanted to share with you since we were together last year, we conducted an image perception study. So asking visitors and potential visitors, what do they think about the Richmond region in light of 2020? So much happened. There was COVID, safety perceptions, removal of Confederate statues, social justice, all kinds of things that we wanted to find out about. And we, the findings were very positive. First of all, we benchmarked ourselves with some aspirational destinations like Charleston, Raleigh, Nashville, and Baltimore, and we ranked shoulder to shoulder with them if people would consider visiting the Richmond region just as highly as they would or right next to those. We also found out, which we all have always known, that once people come here, they have such a great experience, their perception is ranked so much higher than if they have never come before. So we know where our region delivers a good experience for our visitors. These are sampling, you can see of words that were used to describe the region when they think about it. And we did find that the awareness of both the removal of the statues and the social justice movements were high, but also invoked a more positive perception of Richmond being a welcoming place for people wanting to visit. And then finally, last year, when we were here, we brought you copies of our Tourism Master Plan. This is our 10-year regional tourism master plan that's designed to provide a roadmap for our tourism ecosystem as it comes back into recovery and builds for the future. It was based on stakeholders and visitor surveys, workshops and such. And we've been working over the last year on a number of priorities and really have narrowed the focus to three things. The first is focusing on a headquarter hotel next to the convention center so that we can draw more regional conventions. The second is a high investment image campaign that we'll be doing in partnership with Economic Development. So the Greater Richmond Partnership, the Chamber, and Richmond Region Tourism will be using ARP monies funneled through Virginia Tourism Corporation to have what, an unprecedented investment in a marketing campaign that really aligns those two messages to draw more business. And the third is really workforce development. I'm sure you're all aware of the challenges in workforce development and workforce, the workforce shortages that we're seeing. We saw something recently that said that really only mining and construction are the only industries that aren't hurting in workforce. So our industry is definitely no exception and the hospitality may be one of the ones that's struggling the most because it was so decimated during COVID. So we have reallocated our staff and J.C. Pomer is now our Vice President of Community Relations. He'll be coming up next. But they'll be doing a focus in that department on workforce development with our region, or our office, playing a role as a convener in the region. We've already had one workshop and we're going to continue helping where we can, working with schools to promote careers in our industry and drive more people to work in the hospitality industry. So with that, I'll turn it over to J.C.
Good evening, when, I can't believe it's been a year since we were here last, but over the last year, we stood up and talked about how important sports tourism has been for us as a region and for the destination as a whole. And standing up here again today, sports tourism continues to be vital for our regional economy. And actually today, it's close to 80% of the events that we book at Richmond Region Tourism are sports tourism events. We continue to work with your golf courses here. You have a great new general manager at Royal New Kent in looking towards the future. But more importantly, when you look at sports tourism as a whole around the region, whether they're going to Dory Park in Eastern Henrico, it is, it is a very focused kind of driveability factor for sports tourism. Yes, we get events that come in nationally, but folks are driving from Virginia Beach, from Williamsburg, from Norfolk to play in these tournaments. So it continues to be an important part of what we focus on in our marketing for sports, for Richmond Region Tourism, is getting in front of those sports tourism parents who may want to visit your wineries or breweries or come out to Rosie's. So again, continues to be an integral part of Richmond Region Tourism. Now, speaking of sports tourism, we've really tried to double down on looking at those organizations that drive sports tourism in the region, whether that's a golf course like you guys have here with Royal New Kent or Brickshire or Vinaterra or a youth sports organization that helps us. And we've decided to create, just about a year ago, a grant program for those organizations. And in doing so, we came up with a foundation event for Richmond Region Tourism that is in partnership with all of the area sports organizations, from the Flying Squirrels to the Kickers to Colonial Downs and Rosie's, is to create that special award show. If you guys have watched the ESPYS before, think of that on a local version. And that's again, to raise money and give back to these organizations that create sports tourism opportunities. So I look forward to working with Mr. Smolnik to get that application out and we'll get that to your constituents here as well, for those that may have sports tourism entities as part of a Parks and Rec program or things like that. Now, as part of our foundation, we also raised money annually for a scholarship program with Virginia State University's Hospitality Management Program and look forward to doing the same with Virginia Union's Hospitality Management Program that is currently in its incubation stages. Our foundation golf tournament was just a couple of weeks ago. I had the great pleasure of playing with Mr. Smolnik and we were not at the top of the leaderboard by any means, but we had a great time and got to raise money for a great cause with this scholarship program. And we continue to double down on our investment to create a much more sustainable region, changing perceptions and ensuring that the Richmond region is a welcoming destination for all, and that's both visitors and constituents alike. We, in 2019, worked to create a program called Black RVA to support our black-owned businesses here in the region and continued our investment in Out RVA, which is to support our LGBTQ+ business owners. We also, our foundation many years ago was started by Catherine and a lot of folks on the team and education was our primary source of focus for the foundation because we believe our, our constituents are the most important folks in telling just what we have in the backyard. So I love seeing the New Kent University here. This is the second year in a row we've had the graduation while we're here. And in a very similar manner, we love creating ambassadors for the region and that's what I Am Tourism is, is to help, you know, tell that story when Mrs. Page volunteers for a convention in Coming Town. Those are the people that can help us tell that story and our constituents can do that the best. I think as we're, you know, really learning what COVID has done for the hospitality industry, we as constituents can tell you one thing, that we have so much to do right here in our own backyard and that's what COVID has taught us. There is something to do for everyone. You see Catherine and her family here, you see our staff. And I think in looking at this picture, it just reminds me, well, you only see three of us here each year. We have a staff full of folks that they're not just passionate about what they do, they have a love for the region. And in that love for the region, we have the opportunity, you know, not just to focus on the heads and beds or the occupancy portion of that, but whether it's an Instagram follower or social media on Facebook, we have the means to show everyone just exactly what there is to do in the Richmond region and that comes from that love for what we do. And so we have a great team of folks behind us to help us tell that story and we're really excited about kind of that rebound coming out of COVID-19 and all the great visitors we get to welcome here until we see you again in 2022, which will be here before we know it. So with that, we'd love to take any questions for us and for the team and we, again, thank you for having us out here.
Thanks for coming. Any board members have any questions? Thank you for the presentation. Next item is the consideration of a proposed amendment to the Farms of New Kent PUD ordinance for Land Bay 1, ordinance O-33-21. Ms. LaDuke?
Hey, everybody. Good evening. The only update I have is to let you know that a revised area plan should be at your seats tonight, which removed the wording for another entrance off Old Church Road. And I've also wanted to let you know that Mr. Anderson and Mr. Tunstall would like to address the board if that's all right.
Good evening. I'm Doug Anderson. I represent the developer, New Kent Farms LLC, an applicant for the PUD amendment. I'll be brief, but I promise you that. But we thank you, Board Supervisors and the county administration for letting us bring this for consideration. We think it's, as proposed, is the best alternative for the residents of New Kent County and for best use of the land and most economical, creates less environmental impact. So we certainly hope you'll approve it. But regardless of whether you approve it or not, we'll do our best to make Vinaterra the best community in New Kent County and around. The amenities, the sale we have, we're bringing Jeff Tunstall, who'll speak for himself, but I think we've got a quality builder that will come in that will be hard to replace. So we hope you'll approve this and then he'll close and we'll, we'll have funds to build the amenities. As you all know, there's a lot of requirements for the PUD. We had to pay for two wells, we had to pay for a welcome center, all which we were glad to do. With Preston Hollow, we built the fire station. We have all the proffers, we're now cleaning up Land Bay 2 to return it to its original state because the polo field didn't work. But, so, you know, that's taken a lot of money. But we will, regardless, we've always met our duties to the county and the proffers and we'll continue to do that and make Vinaterra the best we can and we'll build amenities, certainly before the 159 CO is required by the PUD. And we'll do it as soon as we can and do it as nice as we can, but we just probably won't have as much money to do it as good as we'd like to. Anyway, we thank you for your consideration, Jeff. Tunstall would now like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Anderson? Thank you. Ms. Tunstall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Jeff Tunstall with Reach Brooks Land Company. I'm going to go off script a little bit because this is the first time I've had a chance to speak in front of these kind of people. And with Veterans Day approaching us just around the corner, I would be doing a disrespect if I didn't pay tribute or acknowledge those who are in attendance, who are servicemen and servicewomen that have stood in our harms way and has defended our country and allow us to have this freedom to have this type of meeting here tonight. And, sir chairman, I ask if those who are service members, if they would stand and we could maybe appreciate them in public, it's your call. So. Thank you. That was the only thing I want to do tonight. So no, that was my main goal and thank y'all for letting me do that. But, you know, as we've talked about for many months now, it's really comes down to the one thing that Mrs. Page pointed out in the town hall meeting was what is the best use for the land? You know, we're running out of the land that's in Vinaterra, Land Bay 1, and to be able to do the 145 half-acre lots, it would get us approximately to the 450 home sites out of the 455 total allowed lots. So Ms. Page said it the best and I apologize if I'm paraphrasing or not quoting you perfectly because you.
I'm waiting to hear what else.
Okay, okay, good. Because you always say things better than I do and you speak from the heart and I try to speak from the heart too as well. But you said, you know, what is the best use of the land? What is the best use for this community? What is the best use for this county? And what is the best use for the vision is I'm putting in there. But I do think that the half-acre lots, known as the reserve, would be the best use. With the new regulations that we have, we've talked about those, as Mr. Tiller says, I don't want to kill another dead horse. Please don't make me bring Charlie back up here and do that. So we're not going to do that. But it's just a new life we live in, you know? And something else that was kind of struck me out, you know, when the region, the tourism, did their slideshow, I stopped counting it seven times that I saw Vinaterra in some form or fashion. So that's just pretty humbling there. And I hope that next year I can get us up to 10-plus in some of that video. But that's all I really have to say. I'm more than happy to answer any more questions. I've met with several of y'all. I've tried to answer them and speak from the truth and from my heart and that's all I'm here to do.
Thank you. Anybody have any, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I will tell you this. I can tell you that this, this public here has left New Kent. I was in Powhatan and I was approached with someone telling me, trying to tell me about what was going on with the PUD in New Kent and how great it was because if the Board of Supervisors approved it, we was going to have fewer homes and that's a win-win. and how great it was because if the Board of Supervisors approved it, we was going to have fewer homes and that's a win-win. And I was like, it's my district and that's not true. But one thing we did agree on is we did agree on the fact that, and I don't think it has been a question in anybody's mind, that absolutely you produce great product. And so for that, I want to say thank you.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
About the, about the environment. Can you, you think, you don't have anybody here from resource side of the guy?
No, we do not.
If, if Kenny can put up, this was, uh, this is your, your plan that you're asking to be approved tonight. Can you put, Justin, can you point out the two places I'm going to kind of ask Mr. Tunstall about? Oh, no. That's all right. Can you, can you switch it to the other?
It should be with orange, probably.
That's all right. If you pointed out. That's all right. Justin, just. Well, anyway, Justin knows what, what two areas I'm, I'm going to ask about.
Yes.
So, and, and the proposal is, it's nothing on those, on the, on that area.
Correct, yeah, they would be in their natural state.
So I guess my question is, in 2017, that's when the last Army Corps engineer was confirmed. And that was confirmed till 2022? It's confirmed till 2022?
Yes, sir.
And I don't, I was just trying to figure out what environmental regulations have changed because in that section at the bottom.
That's fine, that's fine.
But you know, it's like thirty lots on that, on that piece of land up there. So I know you have to cross a, it's like a little wetland, but it looks like a big, pretty big flat area after you get across there.
Most likely the need for a bridge would be necessary to cross over that. And then also the need for wetland credits or so forth to impact those as well.
And that would be the same on the, on the other side?
Correct. I mean, right now we try to eliminate as much of that impact as, as possible.
So I guess. You wanted, you don't have to, the environmental regulations haven't changed too much. It's just the cost of doing the development, getting across there is probably fair to say that it's doing cost too much.
Yeah, yeah, to do a bridge of that significant could be several millions of dollars.
Right. And what is going to be proposed with that, that?
That area.
That area.
It would be just left natural. It would be part of the common area. So it would, you know, Vinaterra is so gorgeous with the trees. I was just in there today. As you know, we've opened up sales for the cottages and they're working me 24/7. Goodness gracious, they're coming, guys, they're coming, I can tell you that. But the leaves are changing, the colors are changing and we want to keep that beauty there. We don't want to take away the charm that's already there in Vinaterra.
So that's what, if, if you, if you would have put the infrastructure in there, that's roughly, you're squeezing in forty-five lots almost left. It's pretty much. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That's a, yeah, approximately. Not acre lots, they would be half acres.
Right.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any others?
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Tunstall. And good article in the Richmond paper. Ms. Page?
I, I can, I can truly tell you that I have thought about this, I think day and night ever since it opened. I've thought about, I've, I've listened to concerns on, from Bonne Noelle and from the residents about, on the effects that the half acre lots will have on the community. I've read, I can't even tell you how many emails I've read just today about this. But in, in doing all of that, I still think that I was elected to, to serve all of our constituents, all of our citizens in this county. And so I had to do things with a clear conscience. And so I, I was at the planning commission meeting when they were having a very tough time about this. And so for me, based on the planning commission's recommendation and the impacts to the community that our citizens have expressed concerns about, I'm unable to support the request to change the lots to one and a half acre.
Ms. Stewart?
And, and I tend to agree with Ms. Page. And, you know, I said during the public hearing is, and I don't want to be redundant, but, you know, what about the people who bought into the neighborhood that were promised one acre lots? I mean, what about those folks? And I kind of, I kind of envisioned is if I went to a GMC dealership to buy a custom van and they told me, yes, you can have all these three rows of seats and they'll all be huge seats and you need to pay for it now. And then two months later, my custom van comes in and they go, well, on the last row of seats, they're smaller, but you got more room. You know, that's not what they order. So, and, and Jeff, you're, you're a hell of a guy, by the way. And I appreciate you and I appreciate Patrick, the fact that it's been a friend of mine, has been. But the thing about it is you have to go back to what I said initially, that when a developer sets out a plan, has people to buy into it, you can't change horses in the middle of the street. And that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Those who come, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Ms. Page?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move not to accept the, for the consideration of the proposed amendment to the Farms of New Kent PUD ordinance for land bay one, ordinance O dash thirty-three dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Is there any discussion? None, Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller? And Mr. Abbott.
Right. Next item, lease revenue refunding bond series 2021. Sands Anderson?
Evening, everybody. My name is Jesse Dowson with Sands Anderson. We're bond counsel to the county. Davenport, Ben from Davenport is here as well. Last month, or last meeting, I guess Ted Cole was here discussing the results of the refunding and the RFP that they undertook. He, I think, went through all the numbers with you on that and we got a good result on that. I'm here tonight just to kind of walk through the resolution and the documents that are going to memorialize that financing. One of the deals that we're restructuring was a 2016 deal. And the collateral for that deal was the, is the Health and Human Services Building, which is on, you know, the kind of the bigger courthouse lot. But it's, it's kind of already a separated out piece. It serves as collateral for that existing deal. That's one of the deals that we're going to take out along with the other ones. And those are listed in your resolution. I think we kind of discussed those. But so this is a, an EDA lease financing deal, which is what you guys are familiar with, what these existing deals are. So it's going to be a bond that's going to be issued by the EDA, that's going to be secured by this piece of collateral that's owned by the county. And so there's a leasehold interest that's given basically to the bank, which is CNF in this case, that secures the county payments. So this isn't debt for constitutional purposes, but it is an obligation that's issued by the EDA and that is backed by the county's moral obligation. And basically you, if you didn't make those payments, then the county would lose use of that piece of that property for the leasehold period. Like I said, Ted has kind of already gone through the refunding analysis. You guys are saving a pretty good amount of money by, by kind of, you know, incorporating all these deals that you have going back from, I think, fourteen, a couple of sixteen deals, the Pine Fork Park project financing, all those things are consolidated into this one. And so this is, like I said, a resolution approving all those lease documents, the same as what the EDA is going to approve next week. So it's a single resolution, kind of approving that CNF bid and all the related documents. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. So, pretty simple.
I was gonna say, we need a motion, but to me, this is a no brainer.
Yep.
If there aren't any other questions.
Thank you. I normally do mess up.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution R dash twenty-seven dash twenty-one to approve the lease revenue refunding bond series 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page? And Mr. Abbott?
Aye.
I'll try.
Thank you, Patricia.
Whatever you tell me. I'll work for you.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next is the elected officials' reports, Mr. Steers?
Mr. Chair, we have one more.
Uh...
R dash twenty-six dash twenty-one.
Yeah. Our last public hearing this evening is Resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendment. That's what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you is Resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty-one, which will amend the fiscal year twenty-one-twenty-two budget by approving the supplementary carry-forward appropriations in the amount of ten million, seven hundred and five thousand, four hundred and two and forty-three cents. These carry-forward appropriations from the previous year are for ongoing capital projects, programs, and services that the county is already performing, just as the previous two state code requires a public hearing for an amount, a transfer amount of more than one percent of our budget.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Open the public hearing. No one signed up, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Watkins, oh, I need a motion.
I'll do it again. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty-one, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two budget by approving supplementary carry-forward appropriations in the amount of ten million, seven hundred and five thousand, four hundred and two and forty-three cents. These carry-forward appropriations from the previous year are for ongoing capital projects, programs, and services that the county is already performing, just as the previous two state code requires a public hearing for an amount, a transfer amount of more than one percent of our budget.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Open the public hearing. No one signed up, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Watkins, oh, I need a motion.
I'll do it again. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty-one, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two budget by approving supplementary carry-forward appropriations in the amount of ten million, seven hundred and five thousand, four hundred and two dollars and forty-three cents. Thank you.
Ms. Tiller?
I have nothing to like, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockwood? Ms. Page?
Of course.
Mr. Chair? On November twentieth, New Kent will be sponsoring a booster and vaccine clinic at New Kent High School, starting at eight AM, lasting until one, and depending on the size of the clinic, they may extend the time until five. It's about appointment only, those that are interested in a booster or their first or second vaccine. We're using the same call line number as we did previously. Today's Second Liberty Head, a booster and vaccine clinic from ten until two, where we had about sixty, especially older adults that came out and received their booster, and attended the Rotary Car Show at Colonial Downs. And a couple of weeks ago, as well-attended, they had over fifty participants, and it's over there at Colonial Downs. So, we thank Colonial Downs for always being a gracious partner with us when we have projects that we want to carry out, and we thank the community for participating in their project. And that is just about all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Good. Ms. Tiller?
Now, you got something.
I know, I thought when you said the vaccine clinic. Did everybody else get the email that said they had three vaccines available? Did y'all see that email? Yeah, that's the reason I didn't, didn't put anything out there about it, because it said three vaccines available.
Well, they have...
Unless it was supposed to be free, but mine said three.
Well, it's, it's free, it's free and three.
Pfizer, Merck, and J. [inaudible].
It's, it's three vaccines, it's three boosters.
Gotcha, okay.
Free. There you go.
Come on, you got a dent too, don't you, coming up? November? Tomorrow? What you done with it?
Yeah, the Forge Foundation will be having the annual Thanksgiving feast on Thanksgiving Day at the Promise Wars Rec Center from twelve to four, all you can eat for ninety-nine cents. Thanks.
Duchess, yeah. Do you, anybody have anything else? Along with what Mr. Tomstall said, there's gonna be, uh, veterans, is there veterans, are they doing the veterans at the elementary school, middle school again this year? They normally do that, I haven't seen anything on that.
I haven't seen anything.
But I think from all of us, from the Board of Supervisors, we do want to, you know, thank our men and women serving now in the branches of their own forces, and those who have served before us to give us the freedom we have today to be here. So, thanks to everyone that served. So, please don't forget to thank a veteran on the eleventh. All right, staff reports? Uh... Do you have any? Good. Other business?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe before you, at your seat, you have Resolution R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-one. This was prepared by our county administrator and county attorney. It's a resolution opposing a mandate from federal government for mandatory vaccinations. As you're all well aware, I guess, does everybody have a copy? Everybody ever see that copy? Okay. Recently, OSHA, the Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration, issued an emergency temporary standard which requires all employers with a hundred or more employees to require their employees to be fully vaccinated by January fourth, or those employees that are non-vaccinated to submit to weekly COVID-nineteen testing. We would have more than a hundred employees, New Kent County would fall under that criteria and require our employees to be vaccinated or undergo weekly testing by that deadline, unless unforeseen changes come about. There are a lot of lawsuits, a lot of things going on right now, so it is up in the air if that timeline will remain the way it is, or the policy will remain the way it is. So, before you is a resolution that we are going to forward to the federal government and the state government, opposing this mandate for employers of a hundred or more for a mandatory vaccine.
Thank you, Justin. I think, on behalf of the board, we've all looked at this, we're trying to make a statement. We're not saying we are anti-vax, we think you should be able to choose what you do, but we are anti-mandate on this issue. So, I do think there is gonna be a lot of changes that's gonna be happening, and we're gonna, we'll stay on that, but I just think we ought to make a, make a statement on this. It'd probably be good if somebody would read, read it for the public if they...
Read the resolution. Mr. Chairman, the resolution opposing mandate from federal government for mandatory vaccination, whereas the Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, issued an emergency temporary standard requiring all employers with one hundred or more employees to require their employees to be fully vaccinated by January fourth, twenty-twenty-two, or to submit to a weekly COVID-nineteen testing, and, whereas the county of New Kent has more than one hundred employees and would be subject to this emergency temporary standard from OSHA, and whereas the board is the employer of county personnel and would be charged
Four dash twenty-one, amending the New Kent County Code, Chapter thirty-eight, Section thirty-eight dash fifteen B, Delinquent Utility Bill, ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, will we poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next public hearing, ordinance O dash thirty-five dash twenty-one, Division Three, Article Six of Chapter Thirty-eight, amending the re-adopting pretreatment standards for wastewater. Mr. Dane, again.
Yes, as I was just relating to Brendan, I tried to hold off on this as long as possible because it does bring a little bit more work and also a little bit more complex complexities to our code. But the downside is, is we need to set standards out so that businesses that do come to the county know where, what they can discharge into our wastewater system. I was recalling the Negroni project that we had at one point. There was some big concern because we did not have it written out in code what they could and could not discharge. They were concerned that if they went ahead and invested in the county and that we adopted this code, that they might be falling outside of it and have to make some changes. As much as my assurances went to them, they still had concerns right up to the end. So by adopting the pretreatment code, that anybody that comes in will know what's available to them and what's to discharge into the wastewater system besides protecting the plant and our permit and the waters of the Pumunki River. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dane? Open the public hearing. No one signed up? I'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lockwood?
I move to adopt ordinance O dash thirty-five dash twenty-one, amending and re-adopting pretreatment standards for wastewater as presented effective January first, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next public hearing, resolution R dash twenty-four dash twenty-one, FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget amendment, American Rescue Plan Act. Ms. Todd?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before you tonight is R dash twenty-four dash twenty-one, to amend the fiscal year twenty-one-twenty-two budget appropriating funds received from the Federal American Rescue Plan, ARPA for short. The county received two million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight in American Rescue Plan Act funding. The code requires that we perform a public hearing for any budget amendment which exceeds more than one percent of the county's budget, what this transfer would do. We're proposal to move these funds into the capital account, which will be put towards the broadband project that is forthcoming.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Todd? I'll open the public hearing. No one signed up? Close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution four dash twenty-one, twenty-four dash twenty-one, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget appropriating funds received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal year recovery funds.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next public hearing, resolution R dash twenty-five dash twenty-one, FY twenty-twenty-one budget amendment. Ms. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you is resolution R dash twenty-five dash twenty-one, to appropriate the Colonial Downs funds of seven million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents to the capital account. Just as the previous public hearing, state code requires us to perform a public hearing for any amount that exceeds one percent of our budget. And these funding are going to capital for one-time expenditures here in the future.
Am I have any comments?
Oh, just a quick question, Justin. These funds are being allocated for broadband, is that correct?
Yes.
But it's not in the...
No.
What am I missing?
Where it normally goes.
Yes.
There's just more money than...
But it is.
It hadn't been designated for anything but capital. It's going in the same fund that...
Yeah, you're correct. It's been discussed some broadband, but I don't think it's been...
So this is the money that we discussed but haven't allocated?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's not been promised, I mean, it's not been allocated for anything.
Yeah.
It's just more money than was anticipated. People gambling.
Yes.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Nobody signed up? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt resolution R dash twenty-five dash twenty-one, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget and appropriating revenues received from Colonial Downs to the capital fund.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will we poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next is the elected officials' reports. Mr. Steers?
Mr. Chair, we have one more.
Uh... Our last public hearing this evening is resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you is resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty-one, which will amend the fiscal year twenty-one-twenty-two budget by approving the supplementary carry-forward appropriations in the amount of ten million, seven hundred and five thousand, four hundred and two and forty-three cents. These carry-forward appropriations from the previous year are for ongoing capital projects, programs, and services that the county is already performing. Just as the previous two, state code requires a public hearing for an amount, a transfer amount of more than one percent of our budget.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Open the public hearing. No one signed up? I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Watkins, oh, I need a motion.
I'll do it again. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty-one, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget by approving supplementary carry-forward appropriations in the amount of ten million, seven hundred and five thousand, four hundred and two dollars and forty-three cents.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will we poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. All right, now we get to elected officials' reports. Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I stated earlier, I had a town hall meeting this past Thursday in Brickshaw, well-attended, crowded room, and had Larry Dane from Utilities, and the sheriff was there, and had Dr. Nichols there, Sarah Barber there, and great meeting, had a lot of things accomplished. And then this past Saturday, I attended the phone-a-thon that was put on by the Education Foundations Association, and it was greatly attended also. And what I found a little astonishing is that all these school principals and school teachers and all these officials are there bowling with no mask on. But then, when these teachers and these principals go back to school, they have to wear a mask because COVID-19 will zap them and kill them if they don't have the mask on at school. But if they're bowling, it's okay. I just find that kind of interesting.
Better motivation.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Ms. Tiller?
I have nothing to like, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockwood?
Ms. Page? Of course.
Mr. Chair, on November twentieth, New Kent will be sponsoring a booster and vaccine clinic at New Kent High School, starting at eight AM, lasting until one, and depending on the size of the clinic, they may extend the time until five. It's about appointment only. Those that are interested in a booster or their first or second vaccine, we're using the same call line number as we did previously. Today, Second Liberty had a booster and vaccine clinic from ten until two, where we had about sixty, especially older adults that came out and received their booster, and attended the Rotary Car Show at Colonial Downs. And a couple of weeks ago, as well-attended, they had over fifty participants over there at Colonial Downs. So we thank Colonial Downs for always being a gracious partner with us when we have projects that we want to carry out. And we thank the community for participating in their project. And that is just about all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Good. Ms. Tiller?
Now you got something.
I know. I thought when you said the vaccine clinic. Did everybody else get the email that said they had three vaccines available? Did y'all see that email? Yeah, that's the reason I didn't put anything out there about it, because it said three vaccines available. Unless it was supposed to be free, but mine said three.
Well, it's free and, it's free and three.
Pfizer, Merck, and James.
It's three vaccines, it's three boosters.
Gotcha. Okay.
Free. There you go.
Ron, you got a dent too, don't you, coming up? November? You don't want to?
Yeah, the Ford Foundation will be having the annual Thanksgiving feast on Thanksgiving Day at the Protestant Ford Rec Center from twelve to four. All you can eat for ninety-nine cents. Thanks.
Veterans, yeah. Do you...anybody have anything else? Along with what Mrs. Townstall said, there's going to be, uh, veterans, is there veterans, are they doing the veterans at the elementary school, middle school again this year? They don't even do that. I haven't seen anything on that.
I haven't seen anything.
But I think from all of us, from the Board of Supervisors, we do want to thank our men and women serving now in the branches of their own forces and those who have served before us to give us the freedom we have today to be here. So thanks to everyone that served. So please don't forget to thank a veteran on the eleventh. All right, staff reports? Other business?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe before you, at your seat, you have resolution R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-one. This was prepared by our county administrator and county attorney. It's a resolution opposing a mandate from federal government for mandatory vaccinations. As you're all well aware, I guess, does everybody have a copy? Everybody ever see that copy? Okay. Recently, OSHA, the Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration, issued an emergency temporary standard which requires all employers with a hundred or more employees to require their employees to be fully vaccinated by January fourth, or those employees that are non-vaccinated to submit to weekly COVID-19 testing. We would have more than a hundred employees. New Kent County would fall under that criteria and require our employees to be vaccinated or undergo weekly testing by that deadline unless unforeseen changes come about. There are a lot of lawsuits, a lot of things going on right now, so it is up in the air if that timeline will remain the way it is or the policy will remain the way it is. So before you is a resolution that we are going to forward to the federal government and the state government, opposing this mandate for employers of a hundred or more for a mandatory vaccine.
Thank you, Justin. I think on behalf of the board, we've all looked at this, we're just trying to make a statement. We're not saying we are anti-vax, we think you should be able to choose what you do, but we are anti-mandate on this issue. So I do think there is going to be a lot of changes that's going to be happening, and we're going, we'll stay on that. But I just think we ought to make a, make a statement on this. It'd probably be good if somebody would read, read it for the public if they...
Mr. Chairman, the resolution opposing mandate from federal government for mandatory vaccination, whereas the Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, issued an emergency temporary standard requiring all employers with one hundred or more employees to require their employees to be fully vaccinated by January four, twenty-twenty-two, or to submit to a weekly COVID-19 testing. And whereas the county of New Kent has more than one hundred employees and would be subject to this emergency temporary standard from OSHA, and whereas the board is the employer of county personnel and would be charged with enforcing the vaccination, vaccination testing mandate, and while it encourages employees to get vaccinated, it also supports their choice on whether or not to be vaccinated and opposes the federal government mandating that they be fully vaccinated or weekly tested. Whereas the board is concerned that mandatory vaccinations of employees will cause employees to quit rather than be vaccinated, and New Kent County cannot afford to lose a significant number of employees, especially law enforcement officers, as a result of the mandate. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors for the county of New Kent County opposes a mandate from the federal government to require all employees be fully vaccinated or be subject to weekly testing, adopted this eighth day of November twenty-twenty-one by county administrator Rodney Hathaway and Thomas Evelyn, chairman of the board.
So that's a motion?
That is a motion. Is that okay?
Yep.
Is that what you wanted?
Yep.
You said read it.
Yep, that's good. That's all. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lockwood?
I just would like to ask that if it pleases the board, the rest of the board, that we also forward this to other counties in Virginia and see if we can get a little bit more movement in that regard, see if we can get other counties to join us in a similar resolution. I know we've done that with other counties in the past, and I think it would be in everybody's best interest to share that information with other counties.
I agree with you.
When is the BACO convention?
This weekend.
Are you guys going? Well, I would, if you, if you were going to this convention, I would ask BACO to get behind it and see what BACO could, I mean, they're supposed to be representing the counties.
VML, too.
And get them to support. And also, I'd like to add, Mr. Evelyn, sorry with you, that Saturday, a U.S. Federal Appeals Court issued a stay on Saturday, on temporary halting Democratic President Joe Biden's vaccine mandate. That would have required companies with at least one hundred employees to get vaccinated for the coronavirus or be tested weekly. So I have a feeling this will probably wind up before the Supreme Court, but Senator Mike Braun has been working to use the Congressional Review Act to nullify the executive order. And Braun is the top Senate Subcommittee on Employment and Workplace Safety, which has jurisdiction over OSHA. And he announced that this week he was leading a group of forty-two senators in opposing the vaccine mandate, calling it a vast overstep of authority by the federal government, which I totally agree. Thank you.
Any other business?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more item, and I was hoping Mr. Hathaway's will be, I don't know.
He's here.
Oh. Came in. I've been contacted by Mr. Caldwell about the easement, the water easement over on our property adjacent to their property. And do you want to address that, Mr. Hathaway or Mr. Dane?
Nope.
He'll probably take both of us. Yes, I also received an email, similar email, yesterday evening from Mr. Caldwell with an alternative plan to avoid some wetlands disturbances. It says on this property, which would involve the county granting Journey Christian Fellowship an easement across the county's property. And basically, it would be on the southern end of, southern end of the actual school site to install, I believe it's a one and a half inch line. I've talked to environmental, Josh, he believes it's doable, but he will need to provide documentation that he is not disturbing any wetlands. And basically, what he's going to do is bore under the wetlands to get to the Journey property. I've not had a conversation with the schools yet, even though I forwarded Mr. Caldwell's email to Mr. Dane and to Tim Pollak, who's heading up the construction project for the, the schools. What would be required in order for us to grant an easement? Journey Christian Fellowship will have to prepare an easement plat and easement agreement that would have to be signed by the county and then recorded. They have not prepared that yet. But if you're comfortable, and I believe time is of the essence for Journey Christian Fellowship, if you're comfortable with granting me the authority to execute that easement, you could make a motion tonight. Definitely, as soon as I get a plat from them, I will share that with you. Or you can choose just to wait until we have the easement agreements and plaques, and I can present that to you at your first available meeting. Well, this is pretty much a new concept that I believe that they've, they've just decided to go with. And I believe they're in the process, but it has not been done yet.
Did we, did we get the easement granted that we needed from them?
We have not gotten that easement yet, and that should be part of the conversation.
That's part of the agreement.
Yeah.
That is part of the agreement, for sure.
We don't know. We don't have no agreement.
Yeah, I, I would feel more comfortable, you know, I don't know how to press the board. Let's see the agreement.
Yeah, we need a easement from them on Quaker Road to build an acceleration lane. And we, we've not gotten that. We've reached out to them, and we've given them the documents to sign, but they've not signed it yet.
I have one concern. You're taking a pump station that was designed for the school, and it's pumping down into a manhole, which is, is pretty standard. Now, we've added another pump station into this force main. An engineer needs to sign off that the pump station from the Journey Church will not interfere with the school's pump station because at the end of the day, they're going to look to me or Public Utilities if it doesn't work. And we approved the pump station for the school, and all of a sudden now, we're being told we'd like to pump into the same line. It happens all the time. But that is balanced, engineers balance that to make sure it works. And that's what our caution was, that has to be done before we can sign off on it with the utilities.
Which, which brings up another issue, because all of that is part of a site plan process. So if you would like for them to have an approved site plan prior to us granting the easement, that's another option, too. But I guess Larry needs to see the engineering, which is, is part of the site plan.
I think we have to.
It would, you know, originally, I was thinking because it's an easement, a public hearing would not be required. It's not a scanning property, but I, I would agree that we're, yeah.
There is an exception for easements when we're developing our own property, and we have to give an easement to Dominion or something across our own property. But since we, it sounds like we have a little bit more to figure out when we look into the public hearing requirement as well, if that's okay with the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you all need to discuss and bring it back up.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll, we'll communicate that to Mr. Caldwell.
Appointments. Anybody have appointments not delegated by district? Delegated by district, Ms. Lockwood? Okay. Ms. Page?
I move to adopt, to appoint, I move to appoint Larry O. Christian as District Three representative to the Board of Road Viewers to serve a two-year term beginning January first, twenty-twenty-one, ending December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. That's it.
Any others? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Boards and commissions not delegated by district? Mr. Lockwood?
Okay, I move to appoint Charles Caro as a member of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, and I move to appoint Victoria Carey as a member of the New Kent Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Ms. Tiller?
Well, I guess this is, anybody could do this one, but I'll go ahead and do it. I move to appoint Matthew Starr as the Economic Development Authority representative to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. His appointment was recommended from the Economic Development Authority.
Anybody else? I move to appoint Kenneth Eads as a member of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. There's no others. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, all the appointees?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Anybody have anything else? All right, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at six PM on Monday, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and the next work session at nine AM on Wednesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, both in the boardroom of the county administration building. And also, on behalf of the board, we wish all the citizens a very happy Thanksgiving as well. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Tiller.
Do you adjourn?
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
I don't want it.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Adjourn.